Councilmember Vaughn?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Prince?
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. First up tonight, we have a proclamation, Small Business Saturday.
Right proclamation, whereas Small Business Saturday is an annual event that takes place this Saturday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Small Business Saturday has become an important day to show appreciation for local small businesses that serve as a backbone of our nation's economy, and whereas by choosing to shop at and support small local businesses, individuals can make a significant impact on the local economy, creating jobs, and helping to invest in our community, and whereas Renton is home to a vibrant mix of small businesses, entrepreneurs, service providers, professional services, and local restaurants who support our local economy, provide services to residents, and contribute to the character of the community, and whereas we recognize the critical roles of the City of Renton Small Business Liaison, the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and the Renton Downtown Partnership play in providing guidance, resources, and support to small businesses. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025, to be Small Business Saturday in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to support and celebrate small businesses by shopping locally, engaging with our small business community, and promoting the economic growth of our city. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of November, 2025. Signed, Mayor Armando Pavoni.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries, and to accept the proclamation tonight is Tequita Spellman.
Hello. My name is Tequita Spellman, and I am happy to accept the proclamation. I am the director of Ballet Dior Studios. We have been located in Renton for roughly seven-ish years. Our studio promotes the benefits of HBCUs, and if you don't know what HBCUs are, they are historically black colleges and universities, and we promote those benefits through performing arts. Our studio recently, our studio recently won the Creative Economy Award for King County this October, and that was a huge milestone for us. We are currently going, undergoing renovations to our studio, so we're focusing more on programming with schools and giving arts in that way. If you guys want to find out more about us, just, you know, check us out at balletdiorstudios.com. And again, I am super honored to accept the proclamation, and thank you to you all.
All right, thank you. Before you sit down, we're gonna take a picture.
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that your daughter?
Yes.
And tonight, we also have a second proclamation, and it is Artist Sunday.
Right proclamation, whereas Artist Sunday is a national event that celebrates and supports artists of all kinds, and encourages the purchase of original artwork, whereas the arts enrich our lives and enhance the cultural fabric of our community, and whereas the City of Renton celebrates our local artists and the contributions they make to our economy and the vitality of our community, and whereas our community recognizes the importance, the important impact the arts have to our economy, education system, mental well-being, and overall quality of life, and whereas Renton is home to many talented artists, creators, and makers whose work deserves recognition and support. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the Sunday after Thanksgiving, November 30th, 2025, to be Artist Sunday in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to celebrate this day by exploring the work of local artists and considering the purchase of original artwork. Together, we celebrate the creativity and diversity of our local artists. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of November, 2025. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries, and accepting the proclamation tonight is Renton resident Ned Mueller.
Thank you, everybody. It's quite an honor. I've been doing this since I was four years old. I'm 85, and at this point, it's just great to be alive, but I've been fortunate to make a living in my art. I've been a resident of Renton for 45 years, and I'm gonna do the Sunday one, and then two for Saturdays in December. And I thought I better do it, because I was after the Art Commission to do it for 15 years. So I thought I'd better walk the talk, and when we had the one about two and a half months ago, I mean, I was overwhelmed. I sold over 20 paintings in the studio, so that, that was really nice. It's a tough way to make a living as an artist, but like anything is, if you love it, you don't mind doing all the work and all the rejections and that everybody in the world has to put up with. So I'm very grateful. I hope some of you with deep pockets can come out. I'll be, like I say, I'll be there Saturday and Sunday, 9:30 to 5:00, and then the first two Saturdays of December. But thanks again, it's a real privilege to cutting this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Help kick off the holiday season and Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 29th. First, download the Visit Renton app and start your self-guided small business passport tour across Renton. Plan your day with the itinerary builder, explore local shops and businesses throughout the city, and unlock special rewards as you shop small. Then join us at the Renton History Museum for the annual tree lighting from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. Enjoy complimentary hot cocoa and cider, listen to carolers, and for the first 75 youth attendees, receive a free ornament kit. For more details, please visit rentonwa.gov/sbs. Information about preventive street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/trafic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. I want to start by reminding everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the entire council. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. Keep an eye on the little yellow timer there, and when the timer start to run down, please wrap up your comments. And first up tonight is Ty Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and all council members. One again, well, thank you for get a word out there for them. So they slowed down on towing people, but they still towed. But now, I think they try to change from the day to at night time now. So they didn't, they didn't do much at daytime like they used to, but now they do at nighttime. The last Saturday, last Friday or Saturday, they stopped towing people at 6:45 p.m., and which is, they already hooked up the car and ready to wreck away, but my wife saw, my customer saw it and let her know, so my wife come out there and try the camera, because someone said they, they slowed down, or they stopped towing, but they did not. So we go out there with camera, and then when the tow, the tow people saw with camera, and they stopped, and they kept, get off the car, and got, get off the truck and use the flashlight, and sign to my wife fit. So, and then after that, they know somebody go, they recognize my wife, so they, they drop off the car and they go away, because when they go away, they pack my salon, and they say, oh, I found it, they have the, I found it in the car, they have a, they have a parking permit, that's why I drop it down. I say, well, how come you hook up the car if, if we don't camera, you already drag people car away? So now you're talking about, you drop them off, but anyway, that person is the one in the, in the building. I don't know why they keep doing like that. They tow their own people, they, they tow their own spot, and the people we, we mentioned, they leave paycheck to paycheck, they don't have money, you know, well, well, anyway, thank you. It's not like before, it getting way better, but we would like to see it complete. That, 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 that just for the people living there and my business. My business work, you know, right now, it's really hot time. Every business, not only me, that's for sure, but my business is not lucky because they got too much towing around. People don't, don't come over like they, they used to, so we did, really not very good for us. So at, in the future, if they allow no more towing, or more parking for visitor or for the client, then my business will be picked up again. That, that's what I like to see in the future, but I hope it soon. Thank you so much for listening, guys.
All right, thank you. Next up is Gabriel Diaz.
Howdy, folks. My name is Gabriel Diaz, and I am here today to ask some questions and kind of share concerns I had about the lodging tax funding. So for those of y'all who weren't able to make it today, at Committee of the Whole, we talked about the lodging tax funding, where the city gives, or where the city gives some money to different organizations for tourism reasons, trying to get, you know, tourism money in. And coming out of those meetings, I had a couple of questions, a couple of thoughts and ideas I wanted to share with y'all. So first, a lot was talked about heads and beds, right? We want to make sure that we're giving funding to established events, so we make sure our money, it gets the most mileage. I love that, I think that's really, really smart. There is kind of an issue I ran into with that, though, is it can stifle, it can, if done incorrectly, that can kind of stifle innovation and stop calling new ideas coming through, right? I think that there should be some, also a little bit of funding set aside for, you know, giving people who can prove the concept, right? If there's the opportunity where, you know, you're like, hey, you know what, we think you could do cool stuff, let's see, you can do it. And if they don't, we don't give it to them next year, but it gives a chance for really cool new events, right? Because not only does, only giving, only giving it to established orgs, excuse me, lost my place there, not only doesn't get, all right, I think we need to give, I think we need to give people a chance to prove themselves, because not only will give incredible new businesses a chance to prove themselves, but we may end up with a new hit that we never expected. My other concern is transparency and conflict of interest. This is more a question I have for folks, but are people who are a part of organizations allowed to vote to give funding to their own organizations? Like, say I ran a hotel, or roadstop, or visitor center, or whatever, and I'm on the board that decide where's the money goes, it would be of financial interest to me to vote to give money to that org, right? If I wanted to do that, and I want to be a bad actor, that is something I could do. While I have absolute faith in the city leaders and the orgs receiving the money that this is not happening, you know, I trust the commission, I'm not saying this is happening, I think there should be some guardrails in place against future bad actors, because you know, that's all, that could get very lucrative very fast, so I want to make sure those concerns and those kind of guardrails are up, and if not, discuss why. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next up is Ronald Bensley.
Good evening, council members. Ron Bensley from Renton. I'd like to offer a few remarks about the lodging tax allocation, and I did want to first say that my understanding is the people on that committee and, and the staff really did a good job of preparing. I think there were some good points. The concern I would have as a citizen is to what extent a lot of the funding this year because of the FIFA and the new downtown, so much of the funding is going to be concentrated on that downtown project. Some of the projects which have been previously funded, while they're not entitled to a repeated funding, some of them, I think, still serve a purpose of promoting tourism to the city, and that, I have one in particular I think of, is the Juneteenth celebration. That has a lot of small businesses that participate. I remember seeing the number of those small businesses there. I can't help but thinking some of that brings in some people who are from out of town, who are showcasing their businesses. It's just something I would suggest to you, seriously, give this a little more time before you do a final vote. As a taxpayer, I'm looking at this, and I think it could use some recalibration. It probably won't make everybody happy, but that's my request and my suggestion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out and speaking tonight. We had comments about parking at the reserve. I know our staff has been working with individuals over at the reserve to, to support in that situation, and then some comments about the lodging tax, and without getting too deep into the details, there are state regulations around how those tax dollars can be spent. In terms of the makeup of the, of the board, the state also dictates how that is formed, too. So appreciate everybody's comments, and thank you very much for coming in tonight. Next up is the consent agenda. There are eight items for council consideration, if you'd like any for separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Very non-move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries. We're next on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Committee of the Whole has one report to present.
Right, Committee of the Whole, committee report allocation of lodging tax funding for 2026. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence with the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation to approve the allocations for the 2026 Lodging Tax Fund as follows. Applicant: City of Renton. Economic Development Division is for the Renton Community Marketing Campaign, $100,000. Emerald Dynasty Entertainment, New Wave Festival, $55,000. Evergreen Tabletop Expo, Renton City Retro, $20,000. Renton Chamber of Commerce for the Renton Visitor Center, $75,000. Renton Chamber of Commerce, BFS and Bubbly, $30,000. The Washington Therapy Fund Foundation for Reclaiming Wellness Conference, that's $20,000, and another City of Renton Legacy Square Community Programming, which would run June through October 2026, of $600,000. The total recommendation is $900,000. The committee recommends authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute contracts with successful applicants to implement the proposed marketing and tourism activities, or initiatives, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council.
Move the council concur with the Committee of the Whole committee report?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Committee of the Whole committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Oh, allowing it to.
Councilmember Van?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In terms of the allocation of lodging tax funding for 2026, I've mentioned a few of my thoughts at Committee of the Whole, and I just want to reiterate, while perfect is the evil or the good, it's necessary for us to really look at the, the data when we do the process of selecting the organizations, and we said this last year, I was hoping that it would be a little bit different this year, but data is coming up short as well, and within the general data, I do appreciate the LTAC committee having a rubric this year, so there is progress. But I, within all that, I think there is inconsistency of how we could potentially let organization, even though they are providing data of their beds, information in terms of how many folks stay overnight for their events, they're not being selected. But I do appreciate the rubric that's been crafted and will perfected, or at least get better, not necessarily for perfection, but thank you.
All right, thank you, yes. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. I also wanted to express, one of the main reasons I'm not going to be able to vote for this, this evening, is because I just can't reconcile how we're able to be funding new events, and I'm growing the rubric that we have been building upon since 2022 and been utilizing, and further creating more consistency, which I do really appreciate, but to go from what we've done historically and say, okay, well, we're not going to just fund anyone who applies anymore, but I'm not seeing that consistency with all of the funding that we provided, with the data that was provided, and so just provide the public with some of that explanation that, you know, when we have funded things like our Juneteenth weekend, or funded, you know, certain black maker creative events and things like that, and all of a sudden, we're not going to be funding those anymore. I'm glad that we'll be encouraging other ways of funding, but also, we're funding new programs that haven't shown the data, and we're not funding other programs that have shown the data, and have shown attendance and heads and beds. And so with that, I just can't reconcile this tonight, and so it's absolutely no disrespect to the committee. I would, though, as I've asked before, for more data and more transparency, not only just for myself, but for everybody involved in the process, and anybody who wants to be engaged in the process. So thank you, and I appreciate the work that was done for this.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. Five ayes and two nays. All right, we're moving on to Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has 11 reports to present.
All right, the first committee report from Finance Committee is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment, $8,717,627.77, for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and two wire transfers, and payroll total payment of $2,169,873.45 for 706 direct deposits and nine checks. This is the November 1st through 15th pay period. This is signed by the committee chairs and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Okay, then moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries.
All right, next is a utility bill leak adjustment request from U D R T Hilltop 30003. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer, customer account 6885000 in the amount of $5,268.62 for excess consumption caused by a qualified waterline leak in accordance with Rent Municipal Code 8446 and 8523. This is signed by the committee chairs and committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next Finance Committee report is also a utility bill leak adjustment request. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account 051426000, which is Trevi LLC, in the amount of $23,892.10 for excess consumption caused by a qualified waterline leak in accordance with Rent Municipal Code 8446 and 8523. This too is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the extension of fee waivers for the city center parking garage. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance extending the temporary waiver of parking fees for up to 10 hours at the city center parking garage until December 31st, 2026. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, then moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
The next report is regarding Amendment 1 for janitorial services contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement with CCS Facility Services in the amount of $402,270.12 to extend janitorial services at City Park Restrooms through November 30th, 2026. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, then moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
The next report is regarding the threat of condemnation for Stacy Holdings, Inc., for a number, for four different King County parcels. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance authorizing acquisition of King County parcels 3023059096, 3023059098, 3023059099, and 3023059091 through the city's powers of eminent domain, and schedule a public hearing to occur on a before-the-date plan for adoption. A side note, that hearing is next week, December 1st. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an amendment to Rent Municipal Code 5-5. The Finance Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance amending Rent Municipal Code 55 to increase to increase the threshold on the business license requirement for out-of-city businesses effective January 1, 2026. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding another amendment, this time to Rent Municipal Code 525. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance amending Rent Municipal Code 5.25 to be consistent with the local business and occupation, be no tax model ordinance effective January 1, 2026.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Great, the next report is for the Highlands Park Playground Replacement Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract agreement with Northwest Playground Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $379,889.97 for the construction of a new playground at Highlands Park. This is, too, assigned by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, the the next report is regarding a contract amendment for the Cedar River Trail and Bank Stabilization Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 3 to Contract 21006 with Geo Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $198,531.64 for additional work for the Cedar River Trail and Bank Stabilization Project. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, the final report for the Finance Committee is regarding the Youth Athletic Facilities Grant Agreement for the Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Sports Courts. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the Youth Athletic Facilities Grant Agreement with RCO, the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, to accept an additional $52,497 in grant funds for the Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Sports Courts Project. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Development Committee has two committee reports.
All right, the first Committee report for P and D Committee or Planning Development Committee is the 2025 Title IV Docket Number 20. The Planning Development Committee concurs in the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the following 2025 Title IV Docket 20 items, and that ordinances for these items be prepared and presented for first reading when they're complete. Docket D 243, RMF 2 Rezone, Docket D 244, Contractor Yards and Offices, and Docket 245, Code Interpretations. This, too, is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning Development Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, the final report for the Planning Development Committee is regarding the Resource Center in the Valley. The Planning Development Committee recommends concurrence in the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to amend city code to allow resource center and overnight shelter in the CA zone in the valley with an approved hearing examiner conditional use permit, and that the ordinance for said item be prepared and presented for first reading when complete. This, too, is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move council concur with the Planning Development Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank our staff and our Chair, Councilmember Prince, for this committee report. It's a long time coming to support our communities and shelter communities, and not just housing, but wraparound services and workforce development. So thank you.
All right, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We're on to Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up is legislation. We have four ordinance for first reading.
All right, the first ordinance is regarding that temporary fee waiver for the parking garage. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the temporary waiver of parking fees for the city center parking garage, established by Ordinance Number 6139 for periods of up to 10 hours within the city's city center parking garage located at 655 South Second Street, provided for providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, next is Ordinance 6175 regarding the Rent Municipal Code Amendment of Section 5.25 of City Code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, implementing statutory changes reflected in the October 2025 Revised Model Ordinance for Business and Occupation Tax by amending subsections 525-2J1 through 525-2J3, 525-2J5, 525-2R2, 525-2Y, and 525-2Z of the Rent Municipal Code by changing the taxation of certain activities from services to retail, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be placed in second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance, 6176, is regarding the amendment to City Code for Section 5.5. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, implementing statutory changes reflected in the revised Business License Model Threshold Ordinance, amending subsection 553B of the Rent Municipal Code, adjusting the business license threshold exemption, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, motion carries.
All right, the final ordinance is regarding the city's new transportation element to the comp plan. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the city's comprehensive plan to adopt the city's new transportation element, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We're on to new business. Council President Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 1, the Committee of the Whole will be meeting at 5:45 PM in the Council Conference Room. One item on the agenda, and that is legislative priorities. And then that same evening, 7 PM, the council meeting will occur here in council chambers and via video conference, and that is all. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a meeting on Monday at 3:45 PM, locations at Council Conference Room or via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. First is Amendment Number 2 with WSP USA Incorporated for the Lynn Avenue Southwest Storm System Improvement Project, two, agreement with Mead and Hunt Incorporated for the Taylor Avenue Northwest Storm System Phase 2 Project, three, informational presentation on selection process for new solid waste services contractor, and four, emerging issues in utilities. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our community to come and speak, but also to share that my trip to our city summit at National Legal Cities Conference was a success, and I learned a lot about how particularly Utah and Salt Lake City, they hosted the Olympics in 2002, and how we can learn from that, given that FIFA Cup 2026 is in our city. And so I'm going to be sharing a lot of that with our staff. And so, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's why we started planning three years ago. Thanks to the council. Appreciate it. Next up is Councilmember Perez.
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, December 1, at 4:45 PM in the Council Conference Room and via video conference. There are four items on the agenda. First, request for lease agreement for 540 Renton Hanger LLC, lease agreement 99002. Second, addendum 1125 to lease agreement 99002 with Renton, RNT 540 LLC, and addendum 1-25 to PAG 11002 with RNT 750 LLC. Third, we have a extension of the I-405 Renton to Bellevue Houseaway North closure. And fourth, we have emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, what is the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Albertson.
I move the council, that the council meeting resists into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1 subsection I, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second. Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1 subsection I. No official business will be taken, and we will be adjourned directly after. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we're adjourned. Or actually, we're into executive session.